Good evening and welcome to the City of West Covina City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 17th. Tonight I will be taking over the meeting for our Mayor, Mr. Tui. He has a family medical emergency and is not able to be here this evening. So first we'll start our meeting off with our invocation which will be led by our City Manager, Andrew Pasment, followed up by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Rob Sotelo. Please stand.
God of holiness and righteousness, we thank you for the blessings that you provide to each of us each day of our lives. We thank you for our families and our loved ones, and we ask that you guide our footsteps that we may act in accordance with your wishes. Forgive us when we fall short of your expectations, and watch over those who are weak in spirit and strengthen them. Grant our leaders the knowledge to act in a manner which is always pleasing to you. And may heaven and earth always declare your glory forever and ever. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Ready to begin?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Tui. Mayor Protem Sanderson?
Here.
Councilmember Herford?
Here.
Councilmember Sotelo?
Here.
Councilmember Sykes?
Here.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, reporting out from closed session.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. The record should reflect that the City Council did recess to closed session pursuant to the notice of special meeting to consider the items as listed on the agenda for the special meeting. This constitutes my report out from closed session with regard to the first item, conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6. Record should reflect that all members of the council were present except for Mayor Tui. There was a report provided by staff, however, and there was direction provided by staff, but no final action was taken on this item, and I have nothing further to report on this item. With regard to the second item, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.8, under the successor agency action, record should reflect that Councilmembers Sotelo, Sykes, and Herford were present for this item. There was a report provided by staff on this item. There was direction provided by staff, but no final action was taken, and I have nothing further to report on this item. And that concludes my report out in closed session.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. City Manager, any changes to tonight's agenda?
I have no changes, Madam Mayor Protem.
Okay, thank you. I will now come forward for our presentations. Sometimes our presentations are happy and sometimes they're sad, and I'm going to say this one's sad because it is a retirement of a wonderful, wonderful man that will be so dearly missed. I'd like to call forward, first of all, our Assistant City Manager, Tom Bachman, to who will introduce our City Controller, Dennis Swink.
I'd like to call up Dennis Swink. Dennis is joined tonight by his wife, Mary, and one of his daughters. Looking at the younger one, can convince the older one to come?
Yeah.
That's a good reason. It's been my pleasure to work with Dennis, and a lot of you that come to me probably don't see him a lot. He's only here generally during budget. Dennis has had a long career in local government finance. He's been in about 30 years in the business, the last 13 with the City of West Covina. Started here in 1999 with the redevelopment agency. City Manager at that time saw some good qualities, and Dennis saw his knowledge of municipal budgets and brought them up to finance on an interim basis. He was well-liked and respected up there in that capacity, that they moved him, put that there full-time. He's been a mainstay in the department ever since then. Most of the people that come into contact with Dennis, and I know he'll be remembered as just a super-nice guy, one of the nicest guys you will ever get to know. He handled everything professionally but in a very courteous manner, whether it be different departments, whom he had to deal with on budget and a lot of other issues, whether it was residents, whether it's people that had outstanding home loans with the city. He always handled it in the same professional and courteous manner. More recently, I've taken on some different roles within the agency, within the city, and Dennis has had the backfield behind me in a lot of those, and he's proven to be a very hard and dedicated worker, he's very smart, was able to pick up a lot of good things. And in addition to him picking up things, he's got a great quality where he's able to teach other people what to do. As we've lost people over the last couple of years, he's brought along a lot of our younger staff, a lot of our less experienced staff, has got them doing tremendous things, and I think that's a credit to his ability to lead, instruct, be patient, be kind. He'll be really missed. It's been my pleasure to work with him, and I wish him the best. Thank you.
Well, Dennis, those that never had the opportunity to meet you have missed out. You are an amazing man, and he's one of the ones that works behind the scenes at City Hall, and we appreciate him so much, and always has a smile on his face. Just a wonderful, wonderful man. And on behalf of the citizens of West Covina and the City Council, we'd like to present you with the City Award Resolution of Commendation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time in the city, and we will miss you so, so much, and we really appreciate all you've done. And your smile is always, I remember all the years I've been on council, I could see Dennis, and it just always brightens up the room, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Do you want to say anything? Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation I'd like to call forward, Mark Olson, the representative for the Citrus Pest and Disease Prevention Program, that will do a PowerPoint presentation. Please come forward. The mic is all yours. Thank you for being here.
Sure. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity. Again, my name is Mark Olson with the Citrus Pest and Disease Prevention Program. This program was created by the California State Legislature in 2009 to help combat the spread of invasive species throughout California. With me this evening, I had David Pagos with the California Department of Food and Agriculture, and then I also have Richard Izuka with the County of Los Angeles Agricultural Commissioner's Office. And the reason that we're here this evening is that industry and government officials are very concerned about the spread of an invasive pest called the Asian citrus psyllid and a disease that it can carry called Honglongbing or HLB disease. This disease is very deadly for citrus trees where there is no cure for it. If your tree gets HLB, it will die. That's the bottom line. And we just found the first infected tree in California in Hacienda Heights on March 30th. So what we're going to do is we're going to talk to you a little bit about this pest and disease, what the response was from California Department of Food and Agriculture for the diseased tree that was found in Hacienda Heights, what the agricultural commissioner's role is, and then what your constituents can do to best protect their citrus trees from this pest and disease. So I'm going to turn it over to David first.
Great. Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and residents for listening to us. We appreciate it. So my name is David Pagos. I'm with the California Department of Food and Agriculture. We're going to be talking about the Asian citrus psyllid, the size of a flea, very, very small insect, and you might want to think of it as similar to the West Nile virus and mosquitoes where the Asian citrus psyllid is a vector for Honglongbing, same as the mosquito is a vector for West Nile virus. So to kind of put it in context for you, the disease, the Honglongbing or HLB, has no cure. It was found in Hacienda Heights, as Mr. Olson had mentioned. It's also known as citrus greening, and there's no issues for pets or humans to be impacted by this disease. It's a really devastating disease. As we all know, there might be a citrus in your backyard that your father planted or your grandfather, so there's a lot of sentimental value, and we've found about 70 percent of the homes in Southern California have citrus in their backyard. So not only are we trying to protect the orange industry or citrus industry here, which is a $2 billion industry, we're also trying to support the local backyard citrus as well. In Florida, which is kind of similar to California, where we grow a lot of specialty crops, they had a devastating loss of about $30 million per year, and subsequently have about 10 percent annual crop loss as well in Florida. To show you the cooperative nature of the program, we're working with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, the California EPA, who does our toxicologist analysis, Department of Pesticide Regulation, your county agricultural commissioner's office, the California Citrus Pest and Disease Prevention Committee, California Citrus Research Board, and the California Citrus Industry and Residents. So the breadth of it, the cooperation is just amazing. So as Mark had pointed out, there's one find, one and only find for HLB in California, and it was found in the Hacienda Heights area. It's a bullseye map, so if you look right in the middle is where it's found, and we draw an 800-meter treatment boundary around that, and that was the one and only find, and we're able to remove the tree as well. And we have a couple pictures of that coming up for you as well. These are just some trapping pictures that just show the traps that are throughout the state on a regular basis, and these are some of the activities, and you can see one of the young ladies down here is actually doing a vacuum test, to actually vacuum off the plant to get all the psyllids off it, and then we test those in the laboratory to see if they have HLB within their bodies. And then the treatment for ACP-infected properties is to treat with Merit Entempo. We do a foliar application and a ground treatment, and you can see some of the photos here of some of the activities. And then environmental monitoring is very important. We work with the Department of Pesticide Regulation, who oversees our environmental monitoring, as well as the county, and they also have enforcement divisions to make sure that all the applications are by law and by code. We take air, leaf, soil, tank, and water sampling. And then this is the tree that was removed. We actually removed the one and only tree. It's right there, the positive Hacienda Heights HLB tree here in California, and we took it up to the lab, double-bagged it in a secure vehicle, and took it up and analyzed it, and then sent the DNA out to a lot of different scientists that were really interested in this pest. And I should point out that these treatments that I mentioned are kind of a short-term solution set. The long-term solution set is to find a HLB-resistant tree stock or some type of HLB cure, but currently there is nothing. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Izuka, and he's going to go from here.
Thank you, David. Mayor Sanderson, councilmembers and citizens of West Covina, we're the local agency, and it's our responsibility to support the California Department of Food and Agriculture in their efforts to make sure that HLB doesn't spread, even though we're getting a lot of interceptions of the Asian citrus psyllid. So part of our responsibilities has to do with pest exclusion. So we have ongoing programs where we inspect packages coming in via truck, the airports, fast freight carriers, post offices. Those are our responsibilities to make sure that when agricultural products enter into the County of Los Angeles and the state of California that they're clean. Also, in our responsibility, we have the direct marketing program, which are the certified farmers' markets, and there's a quarantine that has been established, and so within those quarantines, it's our responsibility to make sure that the certified farmers' markets and the producers that participate in these markets adhere to the quarantine regulations, and part of those quarantine regulations are to make sure that there's netting over their products so that the fruits and vegetables don't get infested. So that's part of our responsibility. And the last thing is, we also have an Environmental Protection Bureau. Its principal responsibility is for pesticide use enforcement, and so any treatments that take place for HLB will be monitored by my department. So, thank you. Mark?
Thank you. And so pretty much what we're saying is, this is a call to action for a lot of residents around LA. This pest has been found all over the LA basin, and it's really in people's backyards. And so that's why we're looking to residents to get in their backyards and check their trees for this pest. And just know what kind of pests are on your trees. That's the bottom line whenever you're out there watering or just getting out there once a month on a regular basis. And if you even think that it might be the citrus psyllid and you're not sure, the best thing to do is to call the California Department of Food and Agriculture hotline, which is And they will actually have an inspector come out and check the tree to see if it is the Asian citrus psyllid or not. But it's really, we're trying to get residents to be proactive with this issue because it is a backyard citrus issue, so that's very important, and that's why we're looking to work with cities, because a lot of times you are the gateways to your constituencies, and we want to make sure that you have all the information that you need, and should your residents come to you with any questions. And here's what you can do. I mean, the bottom line is, we want to get this information out to residents. The best thing that we can do is communicate with them. So we have a Twitter site that's set up, we have a Facebook site that's set up, we also have a website, which is Californiacitrusthreat.org. We also have brochures that we can place in your city hall. We have notifications that are ready to go that you could send out with pictures to your email distribution list. We also have a public service announcement that can be played on your local government channel. And so really, we want to use this as a jumping-off point to working with you as a council and city staff. As you can see, there's a lot of people that are very invested from state government, federal government, local government, and then also the growers who I represent. You know, there's a lot of people who are very concerned about this issue. We think there's a decent plan in place that can help suppress the spread of the pest, and that's the idea. If you can suppress the spread of the pest, then you can suppress the spread of the disease because there are certain places in Asia and South America where this disease has actually prevented people from growing citrus in those regions. Well, in California, we only have a small area where we can grow citrus. We can't grow it north, and we can't even grow it even more north than the United States. So California and Florida and some of the southern states are really impacted, and it's really up to us to create a plan and implement a plan, and a lot of that entails working with homeowners and working with local governments like yourselves. So, you know, with that, we can answer any questions. Again, we want to use this as a point of reference to raise awareness with this issue with your constituencies, and certainly from this point forward, we look forward to keeping you informed as to what's going on, and we can act as that source of information should you get any questions from your constituents as well. So thank you very much for this opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for being here this evening. Does any of the council or staff have any questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, and the brochure was very good as well. I did have a question for the City Manager. Is this something that we have or have not put in a Discover, or could that happen?
Yes, we can go ahead and put in the Discover, and we'll link into it through our website as well.
Very good. All right. Thank you, and thank you for being on top of the things for us, and we appreciate it. Next item on our agenda is oral communications. We have a five-minute speaking limit. I will call you forward, and you can talk about any items that is on or not on the agenda. And our first speaker this evening, thank you, is Mr. Lloyd Johnson.
You know, they say sometimes an object shown to you is better than a thousand words trying to explain it to you. What I'd like to pass around to the councilmembers to take a look at, this is a small model of what we visualize the Veterans Memorial columns will look like. This is the steel liner only of it, okay? And what I'd like to ask this council to consider, maybe bring up in a further agenda, that each one of those columns that you're looking at would be six foot tall, the face of would be 24 inches wide, and the sides would be 12 inches wide, and each of the back sides would be 24 inches wide. The tops, right now, it has an angle on the top of it that will support it, and an angle around all the edges. The bottom of it will have galvanized angles on the bottom of it with a half-inch plate that's 10 by 12 that will be bolted down. We'll have concrete bolts into the concrete where we will bolt it to, with an access door to the back of it to do it. And the sheet metal itself is made out of 20-gauge steel. Now, I can make each one of these, all five of them, for this city for $250 each with no labor cost. That's what I would like to do for the city. Now, I know there's enough money in the account so far to build these. You know, we've been talking about this Veterans Memorial for some time now, and we've been trying to get things moving, but you can't move forward if you don't take the first step. And if we can get the columns made like this here, like I said, this is just a steel liner of it, and then we're going to have, I think, like a stucco on the outside, and then there'll be a faceplate on it with the names and stuff for each of the veterans to go on. So I'd like to see if this can be brought up in the further council to discuss it and find out if I can get the funds just for the material only. Like I said, I won't charge any labor costs, no, nothing that built it. So I hope we can look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, I don't know the best way about that, if there's, we should re-agendize that item, or if we can maybe have a meeting with Mr. Johnson to go over all the, I know because there'll be legal issues and whatnot that we want to make sure to cover, if that's something that the council wants to do.
I think the latter would be better if we meet Mr. Johnson first and make sure we understand exactly what's going to be done on this design.
All right, great. Thank you. The next speaker is Shirley Buchanan.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Sanderson and other members of the City Council, city staff, and the community. A positive thing I would like to say is, my husband and my family attended the Fourth of July celebration, and it was spectacular again. Please extend our thanks to, is it the Greater West Covina Business Association, I believe, that more or less took hold there. My presentation tonight will be on Big League Dreams, as you probably recognize me from many appearances here at the podium. And I want to start off by saying that the premise for the Big League Dreams was a good idea. I mean, when anything that involves young people and adults, it does make the community a lot stronger. But now, there have been some issues that are surfacing, and the residents really want the answer. I will hopefully talk fast because I do have a lot to say tonight. The old saying, "The devil is in the details," is more truth than fiction. With that said, and as a quick reference to what I will say later on in this presentation, I would like to point out that this is not my first appearance at the podium that relates to my request for financial reports on how much revenue the city has received from Big League Dreams West Covina Sports Park since 2010, and the cost each year, if any, to maintain areas of the property not related to the Big League Dreams Corporation. At the June 21st, 2011 city council meeting, I again asked the city to give the residents a financial report on the amount of revenue the city was paid by Big League Dreams West Covina in accordance with the Maintenance and Operations Agreement and Amendment Number One. At the end of my request, then-councilwoman Ambrose asked the city manager if a financial report could be given to the residents. Mr. Pasment's answer was yes. This is verified by a video, by the video of the council meeting that I reviewed. Mr. Pasment said yes, and I mistakenly didn't ask, "When would the report be distributed?" Big mistake on my part. Since June 1st, 2012, and the latest being June 11th, several emails have gone back and forth between Chris Freeland and me, with Chris continuing to reaffirm the city's position that the tax revenue for Big League Dreams West Covina is confidential and proprietary. When I learned prior to June 1st that Big League Dreams West Covina taxes were confidential, I never referred to it again in my request. In a later email, I did ask what items in the revenue the residents were privy to. He said he had been in contact with the Finance Department for the city and was told that revenues generated by Big League Dreams Sports Park, franchise fees, sales tax, gate fees, advertisement fees, business license, et cetera, are considered confidential as they are based on the company's income. Why would the residents and taxpayers of West Covina allow the city council to enter into an agreement whereby they would not be allowed to know the amount of revenue they were supposed to receive from a bond indebtedness that the community is responsible for? Like I said earlier, the devil is in the details, and who knows how many of the residents were privy to the details at the time of the signing. On June 11th, 2012, I received an email from Chris Freeland that stated, "As it seems, most of this information may be confidential. I wish to send your email below to Sue Rush, who will work with the City Attorney's Office to respond to your request as a public records request." First time I've been asked to submit a public records request. On June 18th, 2012, I received a letter from the firm of Alvarez Glassman &amp; Calvin regarding a request for annual financial report. In the letter, it states that no such annual financial report documents exist, and thus the city is unable to provide documents responsive to your request. The Public Records Act does not require municipalities to create documents in response to requests for information, and instead only requires the disclosure of existing public records. Of course, the annual report I requested does not exist because it never went any further than the council meeting on June 21st. The letter suggests that I could seek revenues and expenditures of the city generally in the city budget. As residents and taxpayers, we should not have to navigate through two...
Councilwoman Sanderson, the speaker, see that are five minutes.
Sorry. Okay. Anyway, we shouldn't have to navigate through this budget book. We should be given the courtesy of the information we've been asking for three years. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just, Ms. Buchanan, I'm not sure where your questions are going, but we have an agreement with Big League Dreams.
I know.
And it spells out that we, I believe, get 10 percent of their gross revenue every year.
I know that.
Okay.
I have reviewed the Maintenance and Operations Agreement twice. I know all the formulas.
What would your question be, then?
My question is, when the, I think it states, when the gross revenue is under $3,800,000, then the city receives 7 percent. If it exceeds $3,800,000, then the city receives 8 percent. I mean, where is this amount in any of the documents?
Can we have the Finance Director answer that?
I don't have the agreement in front of me, but I think she may be reading from the earlier language that was amended in that agreement. There is an amendment to that agreement which now calls for 10 percent, a straight 10 percent, once they hit. And I think the number was 3.8 million. Once they hit, you know, there was a certain number of quarters they had to hit a threshold in, of which the total was either 3.8 or $4 million. Once they hit that, then they paid 10 percent, moving on.
There is nothing in the file for amendment. If it was amended, there's only Amendment Number One, and so if there has been another amendment, it's not in the files. But regardless...
Okay, you know, I know we have some questions. Maybe we can have a meeting, because I know we have other speakers that need to come forward. So if you could contact the City Manager's Office, you know, I know we'd be willing to meet and go over everything, and if that is acceptable with you, I would be more than glad to meet with you as well.
I would appreciate that, and there are several other people in the community that we would like to include.
Absolutely, and then that way we can get the answers, because one of the other things is an RDA project, which is all redevelopment funding, and so there's some interesting caveats to that as well, not being attached to our general fund and whatnot. So, you know, we can do that if you would contact the City Manager's Office. That would, we could set that up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Carolyn Arnt.
Good evening to all of you. Very recently, on July 8th, we had at our church Boy Scout Sunday, and it was lifting up young people who are striving to be our future leaders, and the subject matter was God and country. And there were all of these Bible verses that fit what goes on here and what needs to go on here. And I will give you, first of all, the Bible verse, and then I will tell you from where it comes. The first one, and I took out the word "nation" because it was "country," and I'm substituting the word "city." "A city without God's guidance is a city without order. Happy are those who keep God's law." That's Proverbs 29, verse 18. "A city will prosper when its ruler is mature and its leaders don't party too much." How about that? Ecclesiastics, Chapter 10. Ecclesiastics, Chapter 10, verse 17. "When there is moral not within a city, its government topples easily, but with honest, sensible leaders, there is stability." That comes from Proverbs 28, verse 2. Now, this is about leadership. Without wise leadership, the city falls. With many counselors, there is safety. Proverbs 11, verse 14. "Leadership gains authority and respect when the voiceless poor are treated fairly." That's Proverbs 29, verse 14. "A leader of good judgment gives stability." Proverbs 29, verse 4. "It's the men and women who walk straight who will settle this land, the women with integrity who will last here." And that's Proverbs 2, verse 21. "When good people run things, everyone is glad." Now, those are basically toned down to fit young people. That one is Proverbs 29, verse 2. Every meeting, we open with a prayer, and we open with a pledge of allegiance, and I'm delighted and proud that we follow that. But let us not, once that prayer is over, go back to being not folks who walk in God's path. Here it is for us, as citizens. Be a good citizen. All governments are under God in so much as there is peace and order. It's God's order, so live responsibly as a city. All of these things have to do with the five things that I always talk about here, that you rule in isolation, in arrogance, ignorance, and now more recently, I have added the word denial, and that leads to failure. Recently, in an editorial in the Tribune, it indicated, rightfully so, that we, as citizens, are also guilty, because we have not been an oversight committee. That is all going to change. We are going to be here, we are going to be watching very carefully, because this city must get itself turned around. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Forrest Wilkins is our next speaker.
Good evening, Forrest Wilkins. Leanna, my wife and I have been residents of West Covina this October for 40 years. I'd like to start off by sharing the definition of two words, knowledge versus wisdom. Knowledge is knowing that tomato is a fruit. Wisdom is knowing you don't mix tomato in a fruit salad. I'm here to talk about the Evergreen Contract. In a San Gabriel Valley Tribune, 7/11, I'm going to read the last paragraph on page A5. First of all, it says, "Rosemead approves trash contract with concessions." The last paragraph reads, "The contract with Consolidated also stipulates that Consolidated trash be involved in community events, programs, provide more bulky item pickup services, and an incentive-based commercial multifamily recycling program to assist Rosemead in meeting new environmental mandates." The reason why I read that is because, in the past, the council has made remarks inferred that Athens could possibly be the only trash company in the community that adhered to that. But just reading the newspaper and checking with different cities, we know that there's more than one trash company that services the San Gabriel Valley that meets the mandates. Again, as I reported a couple meetings ago, Rosemead residents pay $16 and change. Athens bid on that open bid contract back in March, I believe it was, and they submitted a bid for $16 and change. Consolidated had been the contract trash collector for Rosemead for 20 years when this contract came up. Before the bid came up, the residents of Rosemead were paying $19. The new contract came up, and Consolidated, recognizing their competition, bid $16. They cut their fee down $3. Amazing what contracts, open contracts, or RFPs produce. It's beyond time that we eliminate the Evergreen Contract. If we eliminate the Evergreen Contract tomorrow, Athens still has a 12-year contract with the city. As we get to the 12-years' end, we would have an open bid contract. Then who knows? Maybe Athens would come in with the lowest bid then, but with the Evergreen Contract, that's not going to happen. The citizens of West Covina would win. Right now, residents are paying about $10 per month more than what competition says we should be paying. Again, Rosemead, $16, West Covina, 26. Knowledge versus wisdom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is John Honell.
Good evening, thank you. My wife and I have been on vacation for a month or so, and we came back and got all the newspapers, which is an interesting way to try and read them, is just pick them out of the pile, so I might have things a little out of order. One of the first things I saw was the audit requested by Mr. Sykes. Thank you very much. I think that's most helpful to all the citizens about the police, just an audit of the police and what the cost and so forth is. Basically, we can't afford more police, is what I read, got out of that. Then I found a newspaper, an article that said that the Police Department had just promoted about 10 officers to sergeant and lieutenant, which the audit said we have 90 police officers now, and we've just promoted 10% of them. First of all, does that have to be approved by the council? I don't know those promotions. How much does it cost to promote, to have all those promotions? And it appears they went into effect just before the new pay went into effect on July 1st. And then, just today, it said CalPERS only got 1% return on that. Now, I believe the police officer, the Police Department participates in a defined benefit program, which means that 1% isn't going to cover it. The city just has to give that money to CalPERS, I think that's right. Is that for, to make sure the retirement liabilities are funded? Anyway, does the council have to approve all those things? Basically, I'm just asking that. Do they have to approve the promotions for the Police Department?
Mr. City Manager.
The promotions are positions that are already in the budget. They are positions as a result of either vacancies, as a result of retirements, or whatever the case may be. So, they promote to fill those particular vacancies. As far as the salary negotiations, those will apply across the board, whether you're in police management or whether you're a police officer.
Okay, but they needed 10% more supervisors, is that correct?
They didn't gain 10%, they backfilled vacancies that were existing.
Okay, so then they've got...
I think your question is, which would be in the budget, how many...
How many supervisors are there?
Supervisors are there, and you can find that within the budget in terms of how many sergeants and lieutenants. We've downsized the department, because we used to have three commanders, now we only have two. We've reduced the number of lieutenants in the department, we've reduced the number of, I believe, sergeants as well in the department.
Okay, because just the way, like I say, it's an interesting way I read the newspapers. It appeared it was like a backdoor way to give a lot of guys raises without when we weren't giving raises, just the way it appeared, so I'm glad to hear that, and it wasn't that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Bill Rowe.
You guys are kicking on the over here. Mayor, City Council, my name is Bill Rowe, I live in West Covina. I haven't been around, because I've been working on a project with my friend Ruben Traviso, and it's called the Rise Up America Concert that we're having in August. And we have the West Covina stage, and it's going to be in La Puente, because of three acres of parking. But anyway, I'm going to leave a flyer, and I'm going to email this to Scott, so you guys get the information, but just, just your information. And also, you know, we're partnering with the United Veterans of America, and this concert is not so much any political statement, it's basically maybe our first thing out to just have the vets have a good time. You know, they're going to be our honored guests. And what I've done today is just to give you guys the flyer and give you the date of August 26th. Since the stage is there, I would really like to see the mayor or Mayor Protem come and give the, with the color guard, give the, you know, honor of our, you know, opening words, before we start four hours of rock and roll. Okay? Also, you know, I'd like to invite, introduce Ruben Traviso. He's my dear friend, he's also got three Bronze Stars, the Vietnam Medal of Gallantry. He's a past National Commander of the American GR Forum, and he's the current Director of United Veterans of America. And I'd like to introduce Ruben, and, you know, maybe have him invite the vets, you know, to come to the concert. He has a, I'm getting old, I thought I made copies, but I made one copy of his ticket. So, we'll take care of that today, but I'd like to introduce Ruben Traviso.
Hello, my name is Ruben Traviso. Oops, broke something again. Anyway, we're holding the concert to honor the vets. But not only that, if you took Time Magazine this week, it's one veteran commits suicide. No one active military commits suicide every day. 18 veterans commit suicide every day. California has 1/3 of the entire Marine Corps, 1/3. We have 86,000 at Camp Pendleton, they all train at Fort Irwin, and because California's such a lovely state, they want to stay here, so they do. Cal State LA, I've got over 1,000 veterans. Every community college has between 300 and 500 veterans, and they haven't even begun to come home. So, my hope is that by having them come to a local function, they develop a relationship with each other, so when they get depressed, they can call each other, because they've got a friend that they can talk to. How many veterans are here? You know that the only people that can really understand what you say is another veteran, because they speak the same language. And that's why we're doing this. We're doing this to save lives, to honor the vets, but to honor and protect them and their lives. 5% to 10% of all the vets in Iraq and Afghanistan are women. The women are the ones driving the trucks, because the GRs are the ones that are out on patrol. This Saturday, we're participating at USC with a Homeless Women's Veterans Conference to provide services and programs for them. And it's those type of things that we do. I got a call last night regarding the 1,000 veterans at Cal State LA. They've got some problems up there, so we'll fix it. Read the LA Times the next couple of days. We're good at that stuff, because we have friends. And in fact, in my discussion with Secretary of Labor Hilda Solis, who you guys mushroomed and developed to where she's at, thanks a lot for that, in my discussions with her, she put out a brochure and a manual on sexual trauma for women veterans. And it's those kinds of things that we discuss with people, to allow them, these are the problems that are taking place, these are the solutions, and here's how you resolve them. With Chase Bank, we issued a couple of position papers, so they've taken the lead to hire 100,000 veterans and give out 1,000 homes. So, in our correspondence and discussions with everyone, we also issue policy papers, program papers, solutions. Even with the private sector and employment, I met with the Assistant Secretary for Labor for Veterans Affairs at Department of Labor, and we discussed, "How do you provide jobs, and what do you do, and where do you have to go, and how do you increase the job market for the returning veterans?" Bit by bit, we're going to resolve it, because we have to, because we owe these young men and women the future, and they are our future, because without them, we would not have what we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes Earl Communications. Mr. City Manager, if there is a way that we can help the group, maybe get in touch with them and, you know, access our resources to advertise for their items, so thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Calendar. I will look for a motion unless any items will be pulled.
Madam Mayor Protem, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second, all in favor for the Consent Calendar?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion approves. Next, we have a public hearing on item 17. This matter is set for our public hearing and consists of an amendment to Chapter 26 of the West Covina Municipal Code relating to reasonable accommodation standards in accordance with Americans with Disabilities Act. City Clerk, can you please verify that proper legal notice has been given?
Yes, that's verified.
Thank you very much. At this time, I shall open the public hearing on Code Amendment Number 11-02. There will first be the presentation of our staff report, then we shall hear from those in favor of the proposal, and then opposed. Finally, those in favor will have an opportunity to give rebuttal to any testimony in opposition. Mr. Pasment, who will present the staff report?
Mr. Anderson will do that report.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is Code Amendment 1102 regarding reasonable accommodation. The proposed code amendment would establish reasonable accommodation standards in compliance with the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act, which we commonly refer to as ADA. The proposed code would establish a process to allow a disabled person to apply for relief from city standards so that their dwelling unit can be adapted for their disability. Staff worked closely with the city attorney's office in drafting this ordinance to reflect the most recent changes in law. The ordinance would establish a formal procedure for a disabled person to request reasonable accommodation from zoning standards. The process would require a formal submission of an application with review and approval by the Planning Director. The Planning Director would be allowed to impose conditions in approving such a request. Appeals of a Planning Director's decision could be made to the Planning Commission and on up to the city council. The Planning Department will be recommending that a fee be established to offset the costs of staff time. That would happen when the fee and charge schedule is brought to the city council by the Finance Department. Planning Commission reviewed the code amendment on April 24, 2012, and recommended approval of the code amendment on a 3-0 vote. And that concludes staff's presentation, and be happy to answer any questions. We are recommending approval.
Council, have any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? And seeing none in opposition? I shall now close the public testimony portion and ask for any council discussion or motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to introduce...
I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item is a public hearing, and City Clerk, there's no reading at this point. Okay. The next public hearing is number 18, is the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District, 2012-2013 Annual Report and Assessment. At this time, is set for a public hearing of the city council to consider the approval of a resolution that confirms the annual report for West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District area for the fiscal year of 2012-2013. Notice of this hearing has been published as required by California state law. Madam City Clerk, do you have the affidavit of publication?
Yes, the affidavit is on file.
Thank you. I now declare the public of the hearing open. All persons who desire to be heard will have the opportunity to speak during the public testimony portion of this hearing. First, I will have the staff presentation of Mr. Andrew Pasment, who will present the staff report.
Mr. Freeland will do that report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem and City Council. Before you tonight for the city council's consideration is a resolution confirming the annual report filed by the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District Advisory Board. The Board unanimously approved the adoption of the annual budget. Adoption of the resolution tonight will place direct assessments on the auto dealers of the West Covina Auto Plaza for the improvements, which include maintenance... the West Covina Auto Plaza for the improvements, which include maintenance of landscaping, the auto reader board sign, as well as other administrative tasks of the advisory board. On June 19th, the City Council received the first copy of the annual report as well as the budget. Tonight, the City staff has recommended the approval of that budget. The annual report describes an assessment budget of $12,000 divided among the six auto dealers, resulting in an assessment of $2,000 for each dealership for fiscal year 2012-2013. The assessment reflects the actual costs for those items I mentioned previously, as well as a reserve, which are required to have, of $20,835, which is to cover six months of operating costs. At the conclusion of this hearing, the City Council may adopt, revise, change, reduce, or modify the proposed assessment. However, the City Council may not make any kind of increases to that assessment. There has been a notation in the staff report that one of the auto dealerships, actually two of the dealerships, has been deficient in the payment of their Auto Plaza assessments in the past. They are current, excuse me, they paid the current fiscal year, but they're delinquent still in previous years, so I want to make sure that that's noted as well. The advisory board did ask to make sure that that was made on record. This concludes my report. I'm happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Counsel, have any questions of staff? Okay, seeing none. At this time, I'd like to ask the City Clerk if you've received any written communications regarding the West Covina Auto Plaza Business Improvement District.
No, nothing's been received.
Okay, thank you. I have no speaker cards on the item, and so at this time, I would like to close the public hearing and ask for City Council discussion or motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That concludes this hearing on this matter. Our next item on the agenda is item number 19, which is the Voting Delegate for the League of California Cities 2012 Annual Conference and Expo. We have a public hearing. Mr. City Manager, will there be a staff report or any discussion at this time?
If anyone is planning to attend this particular conference, it's requested that you designate a delegate and two alternates in the event they're going to be voting on different measures that are going to be brought before all the cities statewide.
Okay. Counsel, is anyone attending this event that we're aware of? I see silence. So at this point, Mr. City Manager, do, could we send a, do we need to have somebody there? Can we send a staff?
Mr. Freeland.
Yes, City Council can designate staff members to serve as a delegate if they wish to send a delegate. There is no requirement for the City Council to send a delegate to the conference.
Okay, so if we don't send anybody, then we don't have the vote on that issue?
That's correct.
Okay. Counsel, with, Counsel's pleasure.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I guess we will see, receive and file. Thank you very much for that, Chris. At this time, I'm looking for any council member reports, AB, 1, 2, 3, 4 conference. Everyone's quiet this evening. City Council requests for reports or studies and investigations. Quiet, so that?
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm moving too quick for, Counsel Member Sykes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. My request would be regarding our, the nature of our discipline citywide with city vehicles when there's an accident that's avoidable. I'd like to have a report on the discipline, and that would be citywide, including our sworn personnel. And another thing I'd like to have information on would be regarding the needles and sharp items. Now, we have a collection site, correct? What happens when that collection site is filled? If someone comes and the collection site is filled? Well, first of all, let me ask this question. Have you ever seen that happen with our facility? Has it been filled, to your knowledge?
I'm not aware of that, but it's Mr., yeah, it's your.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
The question has to do with needle stick items, medical discards, needles, and I know we have a program whereby we collect discarded needles in particular. And my question is, has that been to a point where it was filled upon someone's trying to use it and they were turned away because it was filled? Has that happened to our city facility?
I have not heard of that recently, but that is possible because the box that we have only holds so much. If it gets filled at a certain day, and it's, if it's a couple-day backlog for the company to pick those up, we may have to close it for a very short time. However, we do encourage those two people to come back and call us to find out as soon as it's open. I haven't heard of it that much. It could possibly happen, but I think it's only for a very short window.
Thank you, sir. My thinking is, could we expand by way of contacting the legislators and being in support of companies that sell these items, also assist in the recycling and capture of these discarded items? Thank you.
I guess what I'll do is prepare a report on exactly how it evolved to begin with, how it's regulated, and perhaps get back to you with the council's consent on that.
Thank you, sir. And if there's a AB or Assembly Bill or Senate Bill that's in process that deals with that, I would love to have us give a resolution to support that idea so that if someone needs to discard these items, that no one gets, we hopefully will prevent anyone from being turned away, that they'll be able to have an alternative that's accessible and easy to get to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I would like to adjourn our meeting this evening in memory of a longtime West Covina resident, Art Knowles. Our thoughts and our prayers are with the Knowles family. And any other adjournments? Anyone like, everybody's awfully quiet this evening, so thank you all for coming tonight, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.